So much. We have minutes to review from way back in June. July would need a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting.
I'll move it.
Now second it. On paper. So we're gonna talk about chapter twenty four, the Fair Rent Commission, which you know we passed, I think it was in twenty twenty two?
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty.
Just a year ago. Excuse me. So. This was one of the first things I started working on because by by state statute, I mean, the fair rent commissions have been around in large cities for a long time, many years. But it was in twenty twenty three when the legislature mandated that any municipality with a population of twenty five thousand or more had to have a fair rent commission. So Torrington never had one before, but had to have one. So the the ordinance was adopted. And what I was working on initially was getting the fair rent commission up and running. The mayor had to appoint people and get it up and running, try to get them, get them going. And in my review of the ordinance, what it appeared to me is that it was almost like a placeholder, if you will, it was something that was done because the gun was to the city's head to get it done by July of twenty twenty three.
Right.
And it was really just kind of very, very bare bones. So I spent a lot of time reviewing that, reviewing other fair rent commissions. There was a helpful publication that is done, it's called the Fair Rent Commission Toolkit. If anybody's seen that, it was done, it was a collaborative effort by Connecticut Legal Services, the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, and the Melville Charitable Trust. And it had some model ordinances, it talked about the statute, it had a lot of Q and As in it. So working with that, looking at a couple other towns' fair rent commissions, I put together these proposed changes to our rent commission.
Okay. And I just a little more of a back. Yes, we were under the gun.
Yeah.
Talking about. To really get some, get something out quick. So we wanted to make sure we were in compliance. Basically, use the template that the state had with the regulatory language into the, into the ordinance. We expected for that mission, once it was formed, to come back to the ordinance committee with some recommendations. Changes, so. You know, Mike, you've been working closely with the fair commission, so.
Yeah.
Reviewed by that.
Yep. Yep. So I can just go through, so it's six pages long. So the first part, I mean, some of it, I I moved some things around and renumbered things. There are some additions and deletions. So the first section twenty four dash one is no, there are no changes to that.
Yeah.
That's the same.
Which I'm very happy about because the terms of mayor's appointments to the, to this commission, we probably talked about the most. And I think it was fairly distributed with what. Thank you.
So twenty four two is a combination of things. The original statute, the original ordinance had a provision for the appointment of what are called complaint investigators. Now, the first thing is the mayor never did that. She never appointed complaint investigators. And my view was that that they were unnecessary. We didn't really need complaint investigators anyway. So on the one hand, I deleted the the whole section about complaint complaint investigators, and you'll see later on, we we kind of filtered in what you might call complaint investigators, essentially giving the commission the right to call on Torrington Area Health or the Building Department to investigate portions of complaints that might appear to be either housing code violations, building violations, and using those entities as complaint investigators. Part of the problem, I think, with the appoint three complaint investigators, as you all know, it's hard enough to get people to agree to serve on these, anything anyway.
Right.
To think now, you gotta get these investigators, blah, blah, blah. So in any event, kind of a re, a re organizing, the ordinance that we have didn't include the circumstances that the board is, or the commission is mandated to consider in determining whether rent is excessive or not. So twenty four two is that, and it's right out of the statute, word for word. The city, you don't have an option of changing that. You can't say, well, we're not going to consider this one, we're going to consider something different. It's in the statute, it's mandated. And again, so there are thirteen circumstances that the commission considers. So because that was not in the original ordinance, I thought it was a good idea to have it in there. So people reviewing the ordinance will see, you know, what do they have to do? So that explains twenty four two. Twenty four three is mostly new. That also is a lot from that, like the model ordinance that's in that toolkit that I had. But the one thing that everybody agreed wasn't gonna work was initially it said, upon receipt of a complaint by any fair rent commission member.
Yeah, I know.
And and when I looked back at the minutes of your meeting, I think I saw that people didn't like that, and somehow it got in anyway. But yeah, so you got these commissioners thinking, you know, oh gee, I'm in the grocery store and somebody comes up and hands me a complaint.
Right.
So what what this now says is there's a complaint form. The complaint form is already available on the website, so we drafted a complaint form. It's on the Fair Rent Commission webpage. And people can download it and they fill it out and they file it with the city clerk. And then the city clerk lets me know about it, the corporation counsel. The corporation counsel then takes on the responsibility of mailing it to the landlord, you know, saying.
Can I just?
Hi, Paul. Right here.
And he's referencing three of six. This is what we passed, you know, on the ordinance committee of the time. These are recommendations. The commission right now to make changes.
It's okay.
Trying to help, you know.
Yeah. So that, so that proceed, the complaint procedure, really, I feel, we just kind of really buttoned it up about what's supposed to happen. You know, what happens when you get a complaint, you know, giving people notice, giving the landlord notice, giving the tenant notice. You're also supposed to tell them that, you know, landlord is not permitted to retaliate against a tenant just because they filed a fair rent complaint. So that's the the point of twenty four three to really button down the complaint process and what happens with a complaint. It also includes sub paragraph D, you'll see, kind of includes what might be considered a mediation procedure. We always, we encourage people to try to work it out. So, you know, when you get these complaints and when I send them, I kind of have a form letter I send to people and I encourage both the landlord and the tenant, you know, why don't you guys get together, try to talk about it, maybe you can reach an agreement, we don't have to have a hearing. And we can also offer to to act as like a mediator. I know this uses the word informal conciliation, but essentially be mediation, if they want to meet and talk and see if they can work it out. It allows for that.
Municipal staff, like who does that cover? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of an issue, but that's a budgetary thing that the mayor's gonna have to deal with. So there is no budget for the Fair Rent Commission. And right now, we've been running everything through my office. So when we mail everything out and I go use the postage meter, it's, I put it on my account. I'm doing all the work, I'm doing all the letters. So I'm, I'm the staff person.
Yeah, so that's part of the problem, another unfunded mandate.
Right. Right. But it's there.
Didn't put us, give us any money in order to implement.
Right. Provides that a hearing should be held within forty five days from the date of complaints filed. The memorandum of decision part is kind of is deleted up there. Part of it is just moved in, that's one where I just kind of moved things around. So in that section, then, there's additions, sub paragraphs I, J, K, L. I think M. Well, there is no M. See, after your M is blank, right? There's no M now, I know what that is. But that kind of talks mostly about the hearing process. You know, the fact that once, once a hearing is started, it can be adjourned from time to time if it needs to be, you don't have to do it all in one sitting. Memorandum of decision has to be in writing within twenty one days from the date of the hearing. But there's a caveat, unless it's impractical. You know, who knows what that means, but we can't get it done within twenty one days. But you would, but the intent is to get a decision done within twenty one days. And a lot of it is all done by email. You know, there may be a memorandum of decision that's circulated and everybody essentially by email signs off on it, but then there's a provision that says at the next meeting of the commission, they need to formally ratify it or reject it.
So now that we've had a year, what has been the experience of the commission?
We've had, I want to say probably six complaints, Heather, seven. Several of them did resolve, people resolved themselves, you know, and are urging to try to work it out. We had either two or three, I think, that went to a hearing and we issued a decision. And we're kind of learning as we go along. You know, again, the, we were dealing with the previous ordinance, not this ordinance. The biggest, the biggest struggle for me has been, so these are laypeople. And it's a combination of landlords, tenants, and people who are neither one or the other. And even though you don't, you don't use, you you don't have the same formalities like you would a court proceeding, there are certain formalities about the way you conduct a hearing, how witnesses testify, who can ask questions, you know, what do you do? And so for me, as the attorney, that's really been the most of what I've been doing is kind of educating the commissioners, and in particular, the chair. So trying to get him really up to speed on how hearing should be conducted. And we've talked about that, and we actually had a little brief educational session about how to conduct hearings, burdens of proof, going back and forth.
It's not subjective, you know, basically. I mean, it's not intended to be a formal
It's an administrative hearing.
Yeah.
With, with any appeal to the Superior Court. So whatever decision the commission makes, ultimately, if somebody's unhappy with that, they go to the Superior Court. So it's an administrative hearing, which means it's informal. And the formal, the strict rules of evidence that apply in the Superior Court don't apply, but you try to hold people, you know, to it, you know, because you start talking about like hearsay, and who knows? And especially where you have mostly, of all the, of the hearings that we've had so far, only, and only one of them was a party represented by an attorney, it was a landlord. Otherwise, you're dealing with laypeople. You know, of course, they don't understand, they just want to tell you, they just want to tell the story.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So part of what we try to do, what I try to impress on the commissioners is look at, you've got, you've got thirteen specific circumstances that you're supposed to consider. If somebody starts talking about, I don't like the la, the way the landlord looked at me when I passed him in the hall. Well, that's not one of those thirteen circumstances, so you need, try to focus the people on what they're doing. So it's been a learning process.
Of the seven.
Sometimes there's only seven.
Well, that's an interesting, the, interesting, you should bring that up because last week, the Litchfield County branch of the Hartford County Board of Realtors, there used to be a Litchfield County Board of Realtors.
Right.
And then they kind of merged with Hartford. They had a fair housing session here last week that I presented about the Fair Rent Commission Act. And one question from the audience was, what outreach are you doing to let people know that this exists? And I said, hmm, we're not doing any outreach.
Nor are we required to.
No, but it made me think that maybe we should, as a service to our citizens. Maybe we should do some outreach to let them know about the existence of a fair rent commission. So that's why I think there's only been seven.
Yeah, that's.
That's not an ordinance thing. No, that's not an ordinance thing, that's just. Yeah, that would be like, how busy do we want to be?
So I know you're not, I'm kidding, so I'm gonna put Paul first, and then I'm gonna.
Yeah, my, mine's an easy question.
Okay, right.
Oh, are these, are, when, when the commission meets, are they recorded?
Yeah.
There's a minute, okay.
They're, they're recorded, there's always a Zoom link, and then later the hearings, or the video is available on YouTube.
Okay.
So it's all public hearing stuff.
Yeah.
And including.
Elementary rules apply when there's a vote, keeping track of what the vote was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right? Aren't we, yeah? Really, I know. Yeah, and um, so yeah, somebody has to make, like even in making a decision.
Yeah.
You know, what I've explained to them is, so somebody needs to make a motion about whether to uphold the rent increase or whether not to. And they actually, they have broad discretion, they can either say, yeah, we agree with the landlord, the rent increase is fair and reasonable, because the lingo is that the increase is so unfair and unreasonable as to be unconscionable. So somebody would need to make a motion, they can either uphold the rent increase, they could deny the rent increase completely, they could phase it in over time, they could say, well, we don't think it's reasonable to increase it all at once, but we'll let you phase it in over a period of time. They could condition it on repairs, which, one of the last ones we had, they, they did a combination where they agreed to half of what the landlord wanted, but conditioned on him fixing the toilet. Because the tenant was complaining that the toilet wasn't flushing completely. And I'm sitting there, of course, I'm just the attorney sitting, I'm not supposed, I don't say anything, but in my head, I'm thinking, just hold the handle down longer, that's all. So anyway, they, they have a broad range of what they could do, and that's what they did in that case, they said, okay, we agree with an increase, but not as much as you want, but conditioned on you fixing the toilet.
And this has the force of law, Michael?
It can, it has to be enforced ultimately in in Superior Court.
Okay.
You know?
This will bubble up to them, and then that will have the force of.
Right, right.
So they're the final.
Right.
Fact that they're being able to mitigate on the commission, I don't, doesn't sound like any of them went.
Nobody's appealed yet.
Okay.
And one of the last sections, twenty two.
We haven't publicized yet either.
Well.
Yeah.
One of the last ones, twenty two dash seven, talks about failure to comply with commission orders and what happens. What, you know, what did they do? So yeah, it's been.
Uh, just more of a curiosity question of the seven, what was the nature of those complaints? Was it just the, much the rent increase was, or was it some?
Well, they all, they all were tenants unhappy with the amount of the rent increase. And again, they're supposed to focus on those thirteen circumstance. And, but a lot of them, the the testimony really was almost like just a gripe session of things they weren't happy about, that didn't have anything to do with thirteen circumstances. And what, what was interesting in one of them too is, because among the circumstances that the commission is is charged with considering essentially is what's the landlord's overhead? And what does the landlord need to carry, you know, what, what's their mortgage payment? What's their insurance, what's their taxes? Because landlords are entitled to make a reasonable profit, and they certainly shouldn't be forced to lose one. Right? And the other side of that coin is a tenant is supposed to give you information concerning their income and their ability to pay. And you kind of have to weigh those, that's, again, there's thirteen circumstances, but you could, you know, you weigh those things. The landlord refused to give us any information about their carrying charges. And he said, well, I don't want to say that when he's sitting, and it's in there. Okay. And so what you say then is, well, the commission can draw a negative inference from that, essentially meaning that that's not a concern, that the landlord's overhead, whatever it is, he's not worried about it. You know, okay, that's your choice, you want to do that.
I think that what you're looking to amend in this ordinance, I feel like they can't really even, they shouldn't even be able to file unless they meet those thirteen.
We, and we did have one. I forget exactly what the complaint was, but I reviewed it, I sent it to all the fair commissioners, and it didn't have anything to do with any of those thirteen circumstances.
Yeah.
Forget what, I don't know if you remember, Heather, it was, it was Santiago, and I can't remember what the complaint was, but it, it was more like something, and I think I sent her a letter that said, upon review of your complaint, we've determined that it really isn't a fair rent commission matter, but it's something that you should bring to the attention of the Torrington Area Health District.
Yeah.
And more, yeah, she wasn't complaining about the rent. It, I don't think there was a rent increase, she was complaining about the, the neighbors were smoking.
Yeah.
There were other tenants there who were smoking, and she has a child who has asthma. Well, you know, that, that might be a Torrington Area Health thing, but it's got nothing to do with the Fair Rent Commission.
But I think, and our, our job is to look at an amendment to this existing ordinance, and I think if all of these now are defined, which they weren't previously, that it should, I think. Filings, they shouldn't be able to file unless they meet those thirteen, or one of those thirteen criteria.
Right, well, I don't know that I would put it in terms of they can't file, I feel like anybody can file whatever they want. But what we do with it, whether we, whether we advance it to a hearing is another thing. And that's what I like with that one, we basically just summarily said, this isn't a fair rent commission thing, sorry, you know, you might benefit from going to this agency or this agency.
Right, my whole point is if we publicize it, we have the ordinance out there, they're gonna see more clearly with the revised or the amended ordinance that it really isn't something I can file a complaint about. But I think it should deter someone who is.
Yeah, you would hope so.
But I like, I like the amendment, I guess, maybe that's my whole point, I think, putting it out front. So I do think, I mean, I know we're paying for your time, but the members of the people who are on this.
True.
Yeah, unpaid. And they're not paid. So efficiency of their time, having a legitimate hearing based on its criteria is far better, so I guess I like the amended, don't like, don't think everybody has a right to file a complaint if it doesn't meet the ordinance.
I, I guess I, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree in concept, but in terms of, I don't know how you prohibit them from filing something, because the way this is set up now, the way we're hoping it would work, they're gonna file it with Heather. And it shouldn't be up to Heather to decide whether or not it states a complaint under the, I think that's up to the commission to decide.
Is there a formal, man?
Yeah.
Is there a formal document that they have to, do they, in writing, do they have to?
There's a complaint form.
Can that complaint form ask them to identify which of the thirteen conditions is your complaint addressing?
I, you know, we could bring it up.
I like that. Because then it's right, now here's the.
Let me see if I have, I don't think I brought it.
Do you meet the criteria?
Here's the form.
Like Paul's.
I don't think they have more.
We agreed to this amendment and bring it to public hearing.
I agree with you, I mean, if you go willy nilly and whole.
Well, it sounds like it has been.
We're hurting, trying to hurt, Justin, can you, education? You want to put as many, you know, boundaries on the public appealing for something as you can.
So, so this complaint form doesn't specifically list the thirteen circumstances, but the questions that it's asking are keyed towards those thirteen circumstances.
Okay, but is, is there a way, they have to walk in a, or they mail it in?
They can.
What's the actual process, like? Anything? Well, if we, if we.
It's a PDF. If you go to the Fair Rent Commission page on the city's website.
Yes.
There's a PDF complaint form, and there's also a PDF of a summary of what the commission is all about.
Right, so I.
I think it's this, Fair Rent Commission over. So that's all on the website.
Okay.
And generally, what, what a lot of times happens is people may call the city clerk or they call the mayor's office.
Yeah.
And what we'll do, what, what my, the, the mayor's office staff, well, they'll come in and say, do you want to talk to somebody about the fair? And I'll say, well, no, I don't really, but I will talk to people and say, here's the Fair Rent Commission page, there's a complaint form there, there's a document that provides an overview, maybe before you do anything, read that.
Right, and is the link there to the thirteen on the form?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't in there originally.
This is what's on the website.
Okay.
And that includes those cir, thirteen circumstances.
Okay.
Like, you know, I'm, I'm feeling just, I like the amendment that it's in there, I feel like if they're going to file a complaint, that they should be given even before the application form or the complaint form, know the, specifically these thirteen criteria. Not how the rest of the.
On, on their application, I, I would, I would.
Well, even before they get the application, the complaint form.
Well, the, one of the thirty, here, here, here's who I am, here's the place that I'm talking about, I'm filing this complaint relative pertinent to, and then they have to pick one of those things, which would mean that any of the commissioners coming in, committing you, would immediately know, okay, it's this type of complaint. And it would start to, to focus immediately and hopefully save you and save commissioners, you know, save city, you know, from having to get on the phone and narrow this down. Make, make them do a little bit of the work here.
Great. I don't think this is as clear as what you have actually in twenty four dash.
Maybe that's an old version.
Yeah, because I mean, it doesn't really, it says the purpose of it, and it's certainly the responsibilities, but I think straight out, they should have, you know, what the thirteen criteria are to form a complaint. File a complaint. So somewhere in the ordinance, we can amend it to require that. I think it would be far more efficient, I mean, for the members of the commission.
So require what?
Require them to actually get this and it be a part of the application form, the complaint form. So like, right from the beginning, you've got this information, but I think it's, it's a checklist, which of these actually, which of these criteria are you looking to complain, file a complaint? Maybe it's a two-step process.
So the complaint, in, in essence, is that the proposed rent increase is unfair and unreasonable, so much so that it's unconscionable.
Yeah.
The reasons why are any one or more of these thirteen circumstances?
Exactly.
I mean, I don't know what more I can do.
This application is clear about the thirteen that are in the actual or or the amended or proposed amended.
There you go, I'll, I'll just say it one last time. I think by forcing the applicant to literally identify exactly what their complaints are of the thirteen, if there's two or three, I'm thinking it forces them to focus their thinking about what are they gonna come in and, you know what I mean?
It would organize.
I think it just pushes them, think a little.
It'll organize their complaint.
Right, so I guess what I hear you saying, though, is the complaint form needs to be modified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not, not, I don't know about putting it in the ordinance. I mean, it's in the ordinance. The ordinance says, here's the factors to consume.
Right.
But if it's the complaint form, so you want me to do a better complaint form?
Not, just, just ask for that addition. Ask them to own what it is exactly they're complaining about in a very boom, boom, boom checklist.
Yeah.
So when you and the commissioner sit down, everybody's on exactly the same page of what you're here for.
Okay.
So like, I'm not sure I fully agree, I know that it shouldn't somehow be put into the, you know, where in here is it talking about filling out the form? Right here.
It just says that upon filing the complaint, it doesn't talk about what's in the complaint. It says you're gonna file a complaint, and here's what it's gonna say. You know, and here's what happens when you file a complaint. I guess part of my concern would be from a due process perspective, I don't think we can prohibit people, I think this is, from filing complaints, and whether the complaint is sufficient or not. And I even think of that in terms of my experience in the Superior Court. Anybody can file a complaint in the Superior Court suing somebody for anything.
But you have representative, legal representative.
But if it fails to state a claim, the, the legal lingo sometimes is, it fails to state a, a complaint upon which relief can be granted, but it's up to the court to decide that. It's not like there's a gatekeeper who says, oh, no, you can't file that, you can file whatever you want to file, whether it's sufficient or not, is determined by the body who's making the decision. So I just don't see how you can prohibit people from filing a complaint, I don't know how you enforce.
Prohibiting, I think we're educating the person who wants to file the complaint. You know, this is the criteria that the commission is gonna look at, so they need to determine. So they need to determine whether or not it really is going to meet the actual ordinance that stipulates the whole commission.
I guess I still don't, I don't get, I don't get how that would work. So if I do a new complaint form, that let's say it just says, these are the thirteen circumstances that could give rise to a finding that the, that the rent is uh unreasonable.
Yeah.
And so here's those thir- thirteen circumstances.
Well, you, you indicated some of the, just a forum complaint, you know, about the neighbors smoking. Um, I think we're trying to alleviate, you know, that time that's taken the commission to hear those complaints that aren't relative to rent.
Well, but, but we didn't hear the complaint. We, we threw it out just like that.
I don't know. I, I think.
Okay.
Is there consensus that we at least have in the beginning of the? May not amend this, but I think we're looking at amending it to include the section that has the criteria. And we're going to recommend, I think, if there's consensus to the commission to modify the application to include those thirteen criteria. Yeah. Maybe we should get through what we're making through the amendments that are being proposed right now. It still has to go to public hearing.
Something simplest, which of, which of the thirteen scenarios um best describes the reason for your complaint? Identify, boom, 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 check, whatever it is.
Hmm.
We'll make them think about it so and prepare it. And then the commissioners can see it in writing, oh, they're going to complain about this, this, this. So they're, so everybody starts kind of on the same page. That's all.
Okay.
Save a little time.
I can work on that.
All right. So I know we didn't let you get through all the other sections here. I think we were on page. Through the no M. I guess we take that out if there's.
Oh, yeah.
Before debt four. Building rents in escrow.
Now that was something also. The statute provides for that.
Um. Page five.
Yeah. So what that essentially provides for is if it turns out the commission decides that there's a failure, failure to comply with the municipal ordinance or state statute relating to health and safety. So that would implicate both the building department, the building code and the um Torrenton area health district stuff. So what the commission can order is that the rent be paid into escrow until the decision is finally made on whether or not the rent is reasonable or not, or until such time as they bring the, the unit into compliance. The situation that you try to avoid is having a tenant not pay rent at all. Cause then they would be subject to eviction for non-payment of rent.
Previous language, you know, delegating. New language.
The new language is just a little more precise.
Yeah. So that was always the impact, the whole. Escrow, who holds that?
Yeah, we would have to open up a bank account.
So right now, we don't.
No. But I would probably reach out to other municipalities and ask them what they do. You know, maybe, maybe our treasurer can just somehow hold it in-house somehow.
Does it have to be interest bearing?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I should look at that. I don't, I don't think the statute said anything about that.
Mm hmm. Tonight was purpose of the discussion. So Mike's, I know, been wanting to get this on your.
Well, this is going to prove, this is going to be. It's going to take a lot of different groups of people to this.
Right.
And once it stop, once, once it starts, the people realize, oh.
Yeah.
Process for. That's the question, Mike?
Yeah.
Essentially, this, this becomes then a vetting process to go to Superior Court for resolution. Is that fair to say?
Well, not really. I mean, our, the, the, the commission is empowered by the statute and through our ordinance to make binding decisions on people. It's just that they, they can appeal it to the Superior.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't understand that part.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. I missed that. Okay, okay, okay. Well, when I said force it, that's what I meant. Okay. So these are binding.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Right. So really not any significant changes in twenty four dash four. You're going to look into, we told the.
Right. And whether it should be interest bearing or not.
So we can go to the next one. Trying to just for efficiency of time.
Hmm. So we, I think our current uh ordinance doesn't talk about retaliation and that's, that's a big part of um, like in that toolkit and the model ordinance. So if you file a complaint against your landlord for fair rent, he can't retaliate against you and evict you like for either what's called a lapse of time eviction.
Mm hmm.
Um, so non-payment of rent is always a problem. And that's why we tell people if they file these that you need to continue to pay at least the last agreed upon rent. At least do that because otherwise you're subject to being evicted for non-payment. But landlord.
Different process.
Yeah. Yeah. And um, but other than non-payment of rent, another ground for evicting somebody is lapse of time where the landlord says, you know what? I don't want you as a tenant anymore. Your tenancy will expire at the end of the month. You need to leave. And if they don't leave, they then file an eviction in the Superior Court. So this just provides that if somebody has filed a complaint with a fair rent commission, the landlord can't retaliate against them by, by terminating their tenancy.
Understood.
And if they do start an eviction, so that's the other, the way it works is if they did start an eviction, we don't have any authority to tell the Superior Court what to do. But um, the tenant would go into the Superior Court in the eviction process and say, hey, wait a minute. I started a fair rent complaint. He can't retaliate against me. He can't, he can't proceed with this eviction because of that.
Yeah, very fair.
And it's, and. Yeah. And it covers six months. So anytime within six months after the filing of a complaint, the landlord can't, you know, do anything. He could, again, he could still bring an eviction for non-payment of rent.
Okay. So that's such an appeals, just sort of move that, that section. He just basically shifted it over to the two dash six.
Well, this number is all messed up, isn't it? It should be twenty four.
Yeah, you're right.
Everything should be twenty four.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's all right. That's all right. But it is that section that you just extracted that and put it over and then.
Yeah, just move it.
And then twenty four dash seven.
So that's where, so you know, you issue in order and it's violated. How do you enforce it? And technically they would end up having to go to the Superior Court. So the commission can have a hearing and make a finding and impose a fine, but we don't really have any enforcement authority. I can't do anything about it.
Mm hmm.
Um, but the commission either in its own name or through the municipality can bring civil action in the Superior Court to enforce any of its orders.
Are any other questions to Mike? Um. I mean, then, you know, it's on, then when we need and whatever other changes that might, I know you want to move this forward. So maybe in October.
Okay. And I'll between now and then work on the complaint form.
Right. So we have um discussion on chapter twenty two, which is the ethics, what of ethics?
Excuse me. So the ethics came about. And that's a board that is in a state of flux as well. And you know, the mayor needs to appoint additional commissioners. Um, the chair is Darnell Battle, Darlene's son. And he's off to law school in New York now. He hasn't resigned yet. But I, I was thinking he might, but, but back in in April, April twenty second, two thousand fifteen, the then Board of Ethics voted to amend the ordinance uh to include some additional provisions and it never got to you guys before now. So part of what this is doing is incorporating what was in that, the minutes of that meeting from nine years ago. So on page one, the first thing they wanted to make sure about was, and this was in the, in the statute anyway, but they wanted to make sure that everything prior to a finding of probable cause remains confidential. Unless the respondent requests that it be made public. So the way ethics complaints work, somebody files an ethics complaint. The Ethics Commission considers it, they have like an informal hearing that is confidential. It's not open to the public and it's an exception to the Freedom of Information stuff. And only if they make a finding of probable cause and probable cause is defined as, is it more likely than not? It's a really low burden of proof. You know, would a reasonable person believe that a violation has occurred? That's really, that's what it is. So if the commission does not find probable cause, then the complaint is dismissed. It goes away. Nobody ever knows anything about it. If they make a finding of probable cause, then it goes to a public hearing. But up until that point, whatever information they take in, whether it's documents or testimony from anybody, it remains confidential until there's a finding of probable cause. So that previous um board just wanted to make that even clearer. So they wanted to include that in that definition section, confidential investigation. You see on page two, there's no changes. Page three, there's no changes. It's boil, there's no changes. So on page five, there's some changes there. And again, that kind of tracks the, you know, the state statute and what the Board of Ethics is supposed to do where it says um, upon receipt of complaint, they can conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether probable cause exists or not. And they can hold an informal hearing where the respondent can come and has the right to be heard. But that informal hearing is in executive session. It's not public. And then they, the board has to make a written decision as to whether or not there's probable cause to determine whether a violation has occurred. And again, if there's no, if there's no finding of probable cause, then that complaint just goes away. And, and it's all completely confidential. The public doesn't know about it. Uh, and only if they make the finding of probable cause, does it then move to a public hearing. The way this is phrased, it's, it becomes a formal hearing open to the public.
Back up on top of the page, you know, you've got one, two and two. Yeah, I think you mean three up there. And three, as it's written, clerical support. Who currently provides the support for?
Yeah, duh. At this point, it's the same kind of thing. They don't, they don't have a budget. I don't think they have. Even them and, and the Fair Rent Commission, they don't have letterhead. They don't have envelopes. They don't.
They don't have anything. We don't want a complete known department.
So it's all kind of getting funneled through the Corporation Council's office. The one thing I'd say is I'm not sure, I've only been to one of their meetings and they haven't had an awful lot to do. They haven't had a lot of complaints to address. On the Fair Rent Commission, they did elect a secretary. So they have a secretary who takes minutes. Um, and she also has worked on writing a decision. So the one thing that, that happened at my suggestion, the, the mayor appointed Deb Brown, attorney Deb Brown, who's retired to that. Cause I said to the mayor, I said, you know, it'd be really helpful to have an attorney on that. So I don't have to go to every meeting and get too involved.
Right.
And so the last, the last hearing we had, the decision was written by Deb Brown, but relying on the notes, the minutes from the secretary. And she did a great job. It was really good. Short, sweet, to the point. It was only three pages long, said everything it had to say. She's just setting it up. They're getting, the hearings are being recorded on whatever. YouTube, whatever. Where, so when the hearings are recorded, what platform is that? It's on Zoom.
It's on Zoom and it's put into YouTube.
Then um, it's on the website.
Right. So there's a video recording. So we do them in room two fifteen and there's the computer and the projector. And just kind of like what happened here, you know, recording, starting now, whatever that says, similar to this.
Ethics is not, these people think that because of its.
Ethics is completely confidential and executive session until they make a finding of probable cause.
Is that a newer version?
And again, I can't remember, I mean, probably two or three decades ago, maybe I was on the Ethics Commission.
I just grew up on a table.
I don't, and I don't know if Heather knows, she hasn't been around that long either, but I don't think they've had a complaint that they had to address in a really long time. So when the time comes that they do have to make a finding of probable cause, and if they do make a finding of probable cause, moving then to a public hearing, they're going to have to figure that out because they've never, I don't think they've ever done.
Good.
Right.
Thank you.
So. Actions here. Are you looking?
Yeah. So some, some of it for me was, you know, it was a combination of being an English major and also lawyers just like to change things. I just.
No, you don't.
You know, it was just like that. Under sub paragraph F three, the complainant and respondent shall have mail to them. I thought that's really kind of cumbersome. Shall have mail to them. Why don't we just say a memorandum, memorandum of decision shall be mailed? Period. So I mean, that's, there's, there's actually probably a fair amount of that kind of thing in there. Just, just me, what I felt like was tightening up the language a little bit.
Okay.
Same on page six.
So on page six, the only thing. Right. So that also now incorporates that they can receive notices and correspondence electronically. You know, at the time that the first ethics step, you know, the ordinance was adopted, there was no such thing as email, PDF, all that stuff.
Right.
And then down at the bottom, um, initially, the, the original code said the city clerk was responsible for uh having the code of ethics be distributed, but the practice now is our HR department does that. And anybody, any new hire goes through a um, an orientation with human resources and part of that process is they get a copy of the code of ethics and they have to sign that they got it. So that's really just, you know, the reality of what we're doing now is it's human resources. It's not the city clerk who's doing that.
Yeah.
I was a city clerk. I was just going to say.
You do what?
Positions and boards.
So should that get changed to reflect? Oh no, there it is. Next page, page seven. Paragraph B.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
No, yeah. So there you are. So, so HR basically handles everybody except elected and appointed officials. Otherwise the city clerk does.
Right.
The city clerk will hand deliver these.
She'll send you an email.
Yeah, I know you do.
So with this one, although it's discussion, is there substantive changes? It's be moved forward.
Yeah, nothing really substantive that I would say.
What is the?
Say, go ahead. If you want to make a motion to move this one, go, yeah.
Yeah, incorporating the um notification that's discussed immediately.
We'll just, we'll just fix the number.
Formal. Over it.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Moved and passed.
Okay.
All right. All right, so.
So that's gonna go to public hearing. Fair rent, we're still working on.
Yeah, so Heather, we can look at a date for that. Um, any other business on the, from the committee members?
Not here.
All right, now, motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
It won't be, it won't be a big deal to the national.
All right, it is now six thirty-four PM, uh, so I want to call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order. Uh, for the record, today is Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and we have a full board attending in person, um, this evening. For the record, Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Kevin Arrow, and Councilman Oliver are in attendance. Before we begin the agenda, could we please stand and pledge the flag? A little like a. All right, so, um, item number one, I'll jump right in. I need a motion to open the, uh, meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman Iveyne, second by Councilwoman Oliver. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Hello, Mr. Buddhist.
Well, hello, everybody. Got a lot of new faces up here since last time I was here. Yeah, um, I had a few things, um, to go over. I, I see there's not a lot of audience here. Um, but, um, uh, maybe one time there will be audience when I come, but I'm hoping, but I like to pop in occasionally just to be present, because I know everybody up there has missed me.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, it's been months, so I'm sure you, you miss my voice and what I have to say, but whether or not I come across to each and every one of yous, I don't know. But to myself, I come across pretty, pretty good, because I don't read off a proper like this Harris does. I could talk. I could speak. So I have a lot of ability to do that. So a lot of times it's through my head, in my heart, what I say, or I, what I think. But, um, I, I haven't been here in a long time, but I have a few problems in Torrington that I see that's, that's happening. And I want to apologize because I was, I was criticizing um, a lot of, uh, I don't know if Mr. Worden has to do with it, but a lot of the roads were terrible to drive on. I mean, across, really, really bad. And when I found out talking to other people about what's going on, and I didn't realize it at the time, but I want to apologize. Okay, so I, I felt that I heard that Eversource has a time limit onto do the old gas mains. So I was criticizing a lot of the, they were all over the place, just tearing up Torrington. And I have a fairly decent new truck at twenty-two, and I had to do some front end work, repair, and new, new front end underneath it. So when I travel through the roads, some of the roads, I gotta say, are in pretty good shape. Where they're not gonna pave them or mill them. I see they got a lot of pat resurfaced, and they, they, they put the tar in between the joints and this and that, and so it's, it's pretty good. But there's a lot of them that are, are really bad. But I noticed a lot of them are a lot of side streets, like residential areas. Not the places where everybody travels on, the main roads, like up past Water Street. A, a couple other ones, like I went up to hospital the other day and do some blood work. I couldn't believe that that the ambulances, that's a travel, a public traveled road for people like the ambulances to go up and down, or police, or firemen, or, or this and that. That road is a terrorist, is atrocious, I think. And, uh, there's a few other ones that are really bad. And what I do is I used to take the shortcut through, come up Water Street, and then at the church, make the right, and go all the way down across, and come out there by, uh, 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 True Value. I don't do that anymore. That road there is atrocious. Now I go all the way up Main Street, I make the left at the light, and I go that way, wherever I have to go. But then, if you go down up towards Route Four or towards Goshen, that road, I, I, I hope what they do is is re-mill it and pave it, because I don't care where you go on it. It's terrible. And it's a lot of I understand they're doing construction. I, I've been in the construction for thirty-five years. I know a lot about it. And also, um, I like to make a comment on whoever is in charge of paving the new pavement after it's settled, I mean, and they put the new road in and new pavement on there, I hope somebody has the understand that when they pave over a manhole, I mean, I'm not talking pave over it completely. I'm talking about, I did a lot of night work for construction and paving and stuff on the highway and different side roads. And we had risers, half inch, one inch, two inch risers that go on the manhole. So when you pave, you pave to it. You don't pave above it, so every time you go by it, and, and, and my truck goes clunk, 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 and, and that's what I think would damage my, especially going up East Main. A lot of times, if I see the manhole, I'll avoid it. And I'll swing back and forth and go back and forth, but I hope I don't get caught for drinking and driving, because I don't drink anymore anyway. And I don't smoke. So that's a good thing. But also, I got one more thing. I don't know how much time I got left. I know it was, last time I knew it was ten minutes. I don't know if it's time, but also I got a comment. Since last time I was here, none of this here was here. This is all new. Wow, we're moving up. We're moving up. That's great. I like that. But the other thing is Mrs. Carbone.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you personally. I don't want to defend anybody else that's on the board there. I want to, this is personally to Mrs. Carbone. I've heard through the grapevines that you may not be running again, but I'm gonna push the issue that you go. Do the, do the, do the mile. Don't do the half a mile. Do the rest of it.
Thank you, Mr. Buddhist.
Do the rest of it. Stay Republican. But I'm a, I'm a true Democrat, a Republican. I don't have anything bad about the Democrats, but I think they want to move us social. I mean, we're, we're doing it right now. Socialism is right now, it's, it's going on. Whether we know it or not, it's going on.
I appreciate your time. We did change, since you've been here, it's actually been, I want to say almost a couple of years. Um, we did change it to a three minute at the podium.
I love this.
Hey, thank you very much. And just, just because I know you said you're hearing through the grapevine, don't listen to the grapevine. There's a lot of talk out there. It's way too early to make those kinds of comments or decisions, but I do appreciate your time.
The other thing I gotta ask you. Do you still have that poster that I gave you?
I do have that poster hanging in my, yes, yep.
You look at it a lot? And I bet you think about me.
Yes, I do.
Everybody knows what I'm talking about, right?
Oh.
Oh, I don't know if I should.
I'll have to bring it in and show everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll surprise you this Christmas. You know?
Mr. Claus, I get it.
Still got my Santa suit.
Over to saying you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, any, it, it looks like the rest of the audiences are, um, are department heads. So uh, we'll move into item number two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes with the Board of Finance from September third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Iveyne, second by, uh, Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, one abstention. I'm sorry, for the record, uh, an abstention for Councilwoman uh, Ruette and Councilman Kevin Arrow. To be, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, thank you. I heard Councilman Iveyne and Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Then I'll call it. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, for the record, it would be Councilwoman, uh, Ruette and, um, Kevin Arrow that abstained. Moving into item three. On the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board, I'll entertain a motion to approve the vehicle replacement budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions on the budget as it's been presented? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four. Uh, the, um, next three votes are all with regard to the ARPA funds um, and various, um, pools of money that have been approved by the council. So item four A, I need a motion to amend a uh, motion that was made by the council on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And the purpose of the amendment amendment is to add the owner's name and add the vendor that is being reimbursed. Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by, um, Councilman Iveyne. So, um, the way the, um, motion would read is, um, as you can see here, on a motion by Counselor Oliver, seconded by Counselor Iveyne, the council voted unanimously to approve the recommendation of the Blake Committee, Ad Hoc Lead Abatement Grant Committee, and Torrington Area Health District to award twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollar grant from lead abatement grant funds established with ARPA funds going to pay to Carlos Matut, owner of fifty-seven fifty-nine Turner Avenue for reimbursement of lead abatement expenses incurred for the abatement of lead-based paint surfaces conducted by Lobos Construction LLC of Hartford, uh, and the post-abatement assessment conducted, conducted by the Torrington Area Health District. So that's how that motion, um, should have read. It, it neglected to name the property owner. Are there any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four B. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Blake Committee, Ad Hoc Lead Abatement Grant Committee and Torrington Area Health District to award a thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-dollar grant from lead abatement grant funds established with ARPA funds to, um, VJ Tia Door, owner of one thirteen East Elm Street for reimbursement of expenses incurred for the abatement of lead-based paint surfaces conducted by Abrew Construction LLC of Wesley Chapel, Florida, and post-abatement assessment conducted by Torrington Area Health District.
So.
Thank you. I heard, was that Councilman Kevin Arrow? And Councilman, uh, Waldron? All right, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, staying on these ARPA, um, grants, I will entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Blake Committee, Ad Hoc Lead Abatement Grant Committee and Torrington Area Health District to award seven hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cent grant from the lead abatement grant funds and establish, established with ARPA funds, again to VJ Tia Door, owner of one thirteen East Elm Street, and this is for reimbursement of expenses incurred for tenant relocation hotel accommodations, uh, that occurred during the abatement of the lead-based paint services.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And are there questions on this? I would just add that this was, um, a situation where a, a child of the tenant um, had presented with significantly elevated, um, blood levels, lead blood levels. So it became, uh, critical to remove the child from the premises during the abatement. If there are no questions, I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here and acting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator and Purchasing Agent to award the bid for the purchase of a UTV probe for a disinfection system at Two Hack Company of Lovel, of Loveland, Colorado for twenty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. Funding for the project will be through WPCA Capital, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I will entertain a motion by the City Council here and acting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator to approve the following payments, as explained in his memo dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, so A, six A is to approve the payment of invoice two-three-eight-six-six-zero for the Brightwood Avenue sewer replacement project to Wright Pierce Engineering in the amount of forty-one thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents, coming from Fund four ninety.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? I don't think there is a stupid question, so, but they do know.
The reference on here is contract dated August thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. For the Wright Pierce bill.
Is it?
Uh, it says, uh, yeah, well, the top of the invoice has the number, and then it says invoice date nine, ten, twenty-four. Due date ten, ten, twenty-four down the bottom. If you go underneath that blue and black line for professional service rendered through, but it just says contract dated August thirty-one, twenty twenty-two on that line. I just wasn't sure if that was a typo, or if that was ref, referring to something that was done previously that they just finished. Not exactly sure. It's a stupid little thing.
It's not something previous. There should be the last invoice that came on that project. I don't, yes.
If you look at the material.
If I can maybe interject. Um, isn't that the situation where you have, did they have one of those on-call contracts?
They have an on-call contract.
And maybe that's what that references. That's the on-call contract, because didn't we just renew the on-call, on-call contract with them?
Yes.
So I think that might explain it, that the contract that this is coming under was done in twenty twenty-two.
Contract, not necessarily the data.
Project, right.
I think.
I was just curious. It was one of those things that was out there. Yeah.
I could be wrong, but I think I think that's what it was.
Wish I had the invoice in front of me. I don't.
Well, we should get clarification.
Just to make sure.
Forty-one thousand dollars.
It is.
Yeah, I just recall that recently, this was one of the on-call contracts that we recently renewed. And I think it was, I think the previous one was from twenty twenty-two. And they don't have a, like a termination, an automatic termination date in them, so.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm aware of the work that is done there, uh, and that's why it was done, but just, it was just a very strange logistical.
And they're doing inspections on this project, so they're gonna be regular billing coming on this project. Uh, but I'll send you.
It's good. I'd, I'd appreciate it. I'm not gonna get in the way of it over that, because I think it's either a clerical issue or something else.
I'll send that out.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Towsey? Well, he's here. If not, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, item six B, I'll entertain a motion to, um, accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee and the WPCA Administrator to approve payment application number two for the Brightwood Avenue Sewer Project to yield industries in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-five cents to be funded by ARPA Grand, uh, excuse me, uh, General Ledger Account five-nine-three-zero. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, item seven, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of the twenty twenty-four compact pickup crew, crew cab four-wheel drive to Litchfield, Fort of Litchfield, in the amount of forty thousand five hundred sixty dollars. Funding for the purchase will be through the WPCA Capital Reserve, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee and the IT Director and approve the replacement of the City and Police Department virtualization infrastructure servers. The contract is to be awarded to SHI, that's International Corp of Somerset, New Jersey, in the amount of $345,730.19, with funding to be sourced from ARPA Grand List Number 5900. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions or comments? I see Jerry is here, if there are. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I will entertain a motion, this is going to be done in two parts. I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143254, authorizing the mayor to apply for DECD funding through the Brownfield Municipal Grant Program for assessment-only grants for the Brunswick factory property at 535 Midgen Avenue, as described in Economic Development Director's Memo, Number One, dated September 16, 2024. Do I have a motion? Thank you. I heard Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open. Questions? And Mr. Wallach is here to answer.
What does this grant pay for? Is this the review of this? Has this site been already had a preliminary testing? Or where are we with the Brunswick site?
It's a great question. There's two properties that we're specifically talking about. One is the 535 Midgen Ave., which is the factory site. There's also the adjoining parcel, which is the 13 acres, referring as the North Parcel. That's the area between the Nocturne River and the businesses along Midgen Ave., sorry, East Elm Street. So, it's those two properties that we're specifically looking at. The, these properties are also subject to the current Embracing Our Legacy Bar Planning Grant that we're currently going under, in which the city acquired the services of Gamble Associates and Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson has two LEPs working on the project to do environmental review. In their environmental review, they found significant historical gaps, and then also some environmental gaps that would either need to be cured or, or an environmental land use restriction put in place onto the significant portions of the property. The curing process would need further assessment work in order to figure out what the delineation of certain environmental contaminants are. And that's the goal of this assessment project through DECD would be to continue with Phase Two, finalize the Phase One assessment, which is finalize a comprehensive narrative of all the environmental work that's been done up to date, including remediation work. Conduct a Phase Two assessment and potentially Phase Three assessment. The goal of those is to delineate even further those areas of concerns. The reason why this is important is because under the factory plant, I think this is important to understand, under the factory plant, those 20 buildings, 2012 buildings, excuse me, at the factory plant, there are some that could be designated with environmental land use restrictions. Those environmental land use restrictions mean that Brunswick brought the property up to a remediation standard for industrial use only, which is their requirement under DECD regulations. The Bar Planning Grant determined that much of the property could be reutilized for more than the industrial standard, either for small business, for commercial business, or potentially even for housing. So, if those ELURs are put in place, those are lasting, they're not going to change. However, if we do the assessment, we find out that it's only a smaller amount of remediation work that needs to be done in order to forego the ELURs, remediate the remainder of, the remaining amount of ground soil remediation needs to be done, also hazardous building materials that need to be abated, get a full comprehensive picture of what the current status of the project is. It opens up the possibilities for a lot more redevelopment opportunities, whereas now, if the ELURs are sucked to with what Brunswick is utilizing for the industrial standard, it drastically, dramatically limits the number of redevelopment opportunities. That's the goal behind continuing on with the assessment-only project through a DECD grant.
I can tell you that I almost bought that building and the TV lab building next door to it, and there was no way we could after doing a Phase One. No way.
Yeah.
So, this is a, this is an important area.
It is.
Get cleaned up, because there's nothing you can do with it until it gets cleaned up, and no one's going to do it.
Yeah. And that one, I think, is item B, 9B. 9A right now is the 535 Midgen Avenue. But your point is well-made. Until we do this work, developers don't know what they're stepping into.
No way. They run from this.
Yes.
And it's, it's just so important that we do this, do these things.
In addition to that, it opens the door for, so we complete the assessment, we have a full picture of what all of the environmental contaminants are and what the cost would be to do a full remediation. Remediation, it opens the door for the city to partner with a developer to return back to DECD, to apply for those remediation dollars. It just increases the appeal for a developer to come in and actively, not only clean the property to a higher standard than just industrial, but then to develop it to meet those, you know, significant different opportunities that are disposed, including recreation, retail, restaurant, commercial, and even for trail use as well. So, that, it's, it's the first step in many possible long-term steps to benefit this property and then in turn benefit the city of Torrington.
Yeah.
But my question is, is the application ready since it's due?
The 27th?
That, that's again a great question. So, because we have the two LEPs, Brian Bartas and John Zebow, who did upfront through the Embracing Our Legacy Planning Grant, majority of the environmental review already, that grant is ready to put on the mayor's desk tomorrow morning. It's in my office. I just hit the print button, and it's ready.
I don't care, who owns that property right now, the one on Litchfield Street?
So, it's a combination. Great question. It's a combination between Brunswick Corporation owns whatever, for two is the North Parcel. That's the wooded, no buildings, no structures. They own the North Parcel. And 535 Midgen Avenue LLC, owned by Mr. Charles Rhodes, they own the factory parcel, which is the 12 buildings on the main, for 535 Midgen Avenue.
Okay, but, but where the dry cleaners was?
Oh, he's talking about 38 New Litchfield, which is the next motion?
Yeah, the next motion.
Yeah. I know. Get them all out. Yep. Yeah. That is Paul Gerby. Paul, Paul Gerby? Yeah. It is. Well, it's a little tricky. It's tax delinquent, and it was actually held by, in the Hugo Gerby Trust. And the trustees and beneficiaries disclaimed their interest in that property. So, it's very much in limbo, which makes this application, in my opinion, a little more urgent so that we can at least clear the title and, to Mr. Wallach's point, start assessing how much cleanup is necessary. Dry cleaning establishments are complicated. Yeah, notorious. So, this will, I think, address a number of issues, tax delinquency, cleaning the title, and assessing what needs to be done.
Yeah, I just, I'm not nearly as familiar as you all are with this process. Just want to make sure that public funds don't go to cleaning this up and therefore raising the value, inherent value of the property, which then when the city wants to acquire it, we end up, you know, that seems.
So, very fair point. I guess it depends on how you define public funds. If you're talking in City of Torrington funds, that's not the funds that we're looking to allocate. First of all, we're, we're at the assessment phase. And we're going to go for DECD funds, which is all public funds from the state of Connecticut.
Right.
For $200,000. And to the mayor's point, dry cleaning facilities, the ground soil, the water contamination, they're notorious for just deep, deep levels of contaminants that one day could be measured at, oh, my gosh, levels, and then tomorrow could be measured as where did they go levels? And that is another notorious factor of dry cleaning facilities and the property that are off. So, whatever previous investigations that have been done, which date back as recent as 2012, those, even those investigations wouldn't be valid for determining what remedial action steps that need to be taken to clean up this property.
But I.
There's one other point.
No, I didn't.
Because it's a dry cleaning facility, it falls automatically into the Connecticut Transfer Act. There's no avoiding it with, with a list of 26 exceptions. So, I love like, there's no avoiding it, except for these 26 times when you could absolutely avoid it. One of which being if a municipality takes title to a property through certain categories, one of which being conveyance of title in lieu of tax, sorry, in lieu of foreclosure. The Transfer Act wouldn't be triggered, which opens the door for the city to get liability through the municipal Brownfield Liability Relief Program, and then partner with an organization like a Brownfield Land Bank to then transfer that property, again, not through the CT Transfer Act, but through a deep Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Liability Relief Program, like the abandoned Brownfield cleanup program, which gives lasting liability relief to the property. So, if, for dry, dry cleaning facilities, which is, again, another factor that happens is the contaminants flow off-site. It's very common. So, by getting into a liability relief program that protects that property from the, you know, the, the extenuating circumstances of contamination flowing beyond the boundaries, it's an important consideration.
But as I listen to Councilman Kevin Arrow speak of public funds, this motion here today, this next motion that I call, is to allow us to apply for the grant to do the assessment. Clearing up the title and the tax delinquency is another matter that may have to come back to this board for further discussion, but it won't change the fact that we really do need to apply for the grant funds, whether we're working with the existing property owner or working with the land bank or working with some other property owner. I think that there are a few options, and any decisions with regard to clearing up those titles would come back to this board.
You know where I'm going with the question? Grossly unfair, Connecticut taxpayers. If this guy's been delinquent in his taxes, he's done nothing overly to, to mitigate, you know, the contaminants that he and his company have put to the ground.
It's so much more complex than that though. Because he can't refinance, he can't sell, he's stuck with this, you know, and some, I won't get into it too much because I'm very familiar with one of these properties.
Yeah.
But it's also not fair that he can't do anything with this either, because the only way that he could ever, he'd have to sell the property for cash, and then it would be remitted back to the city to clear up everything. It's, it's a very complex problem that people find themselves in, and it's a never-ending loop and cycle.
And just, just to, to all of that, I appreciate your history with this, but we're talking about the TV lab.
Yeah.
And the dry cleaning established next door. It's the dry cleaning establishment that we're speaking of, not the TV lab property. Yeah. So, more will come to this board with regard to this property, but for now, getting the grant application filed. Yes.
I just want, I just want to be sure.
And I think.
I hear you. And yeah, I'm sensitive to all those points.
I think the point that I'm not sure what's in our interest is that, so, the remediation, you know, you apply, you get the assessment done, the remediation is done, who, the value of the property goes up. So, does that private owner get to pay their back taxes and now has a property because of state funds that is valued at a higher rate? I mean, that's, I mean, to me. I thought that's what you were asking.
Yes, it is.
So, to me, it's like, I was trying to articulate it in a different light.
Yeah.
They've got now property that is of much greater value than it was today.
And I was just like.
And I'm not saying that they should benefit, I'm just saying, question that I think.
So, so we have a request from the public that we cannot be heard. If everyone could kindly pull the microphone up a little bit and make sure that you're speaking into the microphone? Yeah. So, all of those points are excellent points, and I know that Corporation Council, myself, Mr. Wallach, and the tax collector have had a number of meetings about this property, because what we want to do is we want to protect the public interest in this property right now. It's sitting, you know, with no use. It's becoming, I won't say blighted, I, I do think that they are maintaining it. I noticed that the shrubs are, you know, trimmed in the grasses mode. But more will be coming back to this board as to how do we protect that public interest? But it doesn't change the fact that we do have a looming deadline for the grant application. And regardless as to who ends up owning this thing, this property, the, we, this work will have to happen.
And, and there's no objection to the application?
Okay.
Answer.
I know, no big decisions about the property itself will happen without this full board's conversation and decision.
Mayor, and William, just a general question, how many of these types of properties that need cleanup do we have in Torrington? Because a good part of downtown Torrington did have significant issues after the flood of 55 with, with the cleanup and how it was conducted. So, I'm wondering if it's not just the what happened on these property sites, like in the dry cleaners portion, but, you know, other historical events, many industrial sites around town may have these issues. Any count on how big of a scope this is?
I don't have a count. However, I will say that the programs that the DCD has aligned for different redevelopment things fall into specific categories. When we're talking about brownfields, there's a very important piece to remember when we're talking about brownfield remediation redevelopment. It's that the environmental contamination is one of the main inhibitors from that site being redeveloped. With dry cleaners, that's, and to Councilman Oliver's point, it's almost always a prohibitor from that dry cleaner being redeveloped because of the extensive cost to rehabilit, remediate the property. For brownfields, that number, I don't have that right now from the city of Torrington. I know that RISTA has a list that she had compiled that I'm aware of, that I've gone through and I'm pretty familiar with. I, I could definitely get that information back to you, and it.
Yeah, just curiosity if we, you know, had, even had that information, because we're kind of doing one at a time.
And not only a list that the Economic Development Office has been holding on to, but prior administration, through Rose Ponti, who was an Economic Development Director 13 years ago, 12 years ago, through the EPA revolving loan fund, that was a grant, that was assessment grant, we assessed a number of properties, you know, and what those properties, types of contamination that may exist. And the other part of that was the revolving loan fund. So, there is a list. Is it a complete list? Absolutely not. Because what do we know? When you have 100-year-old buildings, there's lead, there's asbestos, there's dry cleaning and manufacturing chemicals. So, every, every location will have a different set of problems. But at least there's a, a working list as to how do we check that list off and attack these one or two at a time every time there's a brownfield remediation grant round released?
The, the city of Torrington, I know from a previous job experience that I had, has set a model for brownfield remediation. The model looks like this, a bar planning grant, which the city did in 2015, followed by brownfield assessment grants, which the city did for 100 Franklin Street, followed by a brownfield remediation grant, which the city did for 100 Franklin Street and part of the Franklin Plaza, right? Right now, we're in, hitting the microphone, right now, we're in a bar planning grant for the Brunswick factory, immediately followed by a brownfield assessment grant, which will lead eventually to a partnership, just like with the Penrose property, to develop the Brunswick property. So, I know it feels, it 100% feels like it's one at a time here and there, and we can't, why can't we just throw more resources at this? There's a lot of reasons why. One is capacity. They're, they're long, they're arduous, they're difficult projects to manage, both from state regulation, state funding, and then just locally hiring, contracting. So, that, that, all of those add together, but no, few other municipalities have recognized the model that Torrington is using, and it, it is the model for getting these brownfield projects all the way through to fruition to a usable housing project, a usable recreational project, or, or you name it. So, Torrington is setting, setting the bar very high.
Great. Thank you. I, I do want to make those efforts to remediate so we can put these properties to, to good use again. So, that'd be a great effort. So, thank you.
I'll get you there.
I'll call the motion.
Okay. I have a request to call the motion. Okay. I have a request to call the motion unless there's, okay, good. Everyone's ready? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So item two, excuse me, nine B. This is for resolution number 143256, again authorizing the mayor to apply for DECD funding through Municipal Brownfield, excuse me, Municipal Grant Program for assessment only grants. And this is for the, I have to clean this motion up, for grant only for the former West Side Cleaners at 38 New Litchfield Street as described in the memo of Economic Development Director dated September 16, 2024.
Voted.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And this is the piece of property that most of this conversation has been about.
Apologies.
No, that's perfectly fine because it applied to both. It's the same. It's just the different address. So if there are any other questions with regard to this specific address or more questions on the grant, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move into item 10. And again, Mr. Wallach won't answer any questions you may have. I'm looking for authorization to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for the hazardous building material abatement project to Enviro Consultants and Recyclers, Inc. of Danbury, Connecticut for $222,400. Funding is from the $1 million Municipal Brownfield Remediation Grant from DECD, as further explained in the Economic Development Director's memo, number two, dated September 16, 2024. I think the only thing missing on this is the address. This is for 245 East Elm Street.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, and seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And the floor is open. And if there are no questions, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 11. I'll entertain a motion to accept resolution number 143255, authorizing the mayor to apply for a planning grant through US DOT Reconnecting Communities Pilot. This is an RCP program. This will be for the Columbus Square Planning Project as described in Economic Development Director's memo dated September 16, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And the floor is open for questions. Yes.
Could you explain exactly what the, what the thought is about? The grant is to study the potential for developing a more efficient traffic flow?
Traffic. Yes. And I'll let Mr. Wallach talk specific.
Here's my
Go ahead.
What realistically, what is the possibility of doing any of this work with so many war prof, you know, restaurants? Intact, your retail facilities in that area. I mean, what can you do unless the goal is to buy some of those outright and develop? I know it's, I know it's a horror, I know it's a very, very, you know, inefficient layout of roads and there's tremendous problems with. But what are, what can realistically be done for realistic monies there? I would love to know, I don't want to waste grant money is my point, on a project that will, has almost zero chance of actually being implemented. So what, what is feasible there?
Completely fair question. And it's a question that myself and the project team consisting of myself, the Public Works Director, the city planner, and the city engineer questioned initially. If we're not going to waste our time, we're not going to waste the city's investment to put another plan on the shelf
Right.
that won't get implemented. Right?
Right. Exactly.
And so your question is, I think, one step further. Well, if we get a plan, we want to implement it, but there's so many factors to be considered with not just private property owners, but also state roads, multiple state roads.
Correct.
Intersecting with public roads that are city roads, intersecting with things that we don't even think about, right? And then who owns all of that? Who makes decisions on all of that? So the answer to the question is, we don't know yet. But we know that things could be done because there are things that are identified in that traffic area of the Columbus Square area, which really extends from New Harwinton down to Pass the Duncan Donuts on East Main Street. And then if we go from Elm Street connection.
I mean, that kiosk on East Main, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Which is an important consideration because the way that the EPA's environmental justice lines, that brings this project into an environmental justice area. Kind of get away from the answer.
Into our opportunity zone.
I think generally we can all agree that if we could do something with that, we would do it. What does that look like? So we don't know because we haven't done a study that's geared towards this one particular area. The East Main Street corridor study, that studied the entirety of that East Main Street, identified several areas that could be improved, items like pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, vehicle safety, even things as simple as geometries for line of sight. Which it sounds very simple to say, but it's a very complex thing to understand and then come up with design plans to mitigate those geometric issues for just coming up to an intersection, having to make a, you know, more than 90 degree turn back in the other direction. That's a very difficult thing to, on a daily basis, do in a safe way.
I understand that, that you have limited options for making any serious approval. I guess what I'm asking for is how much is the grant for? And why do we need additional monies? Can't our existing staff? I mean, it sounds like you know what is actually doable and your team here at City Hall. Do we need to get higher outside experts again to advise you guys? Or what will the grant do for you?
So the total grant is for $441,600.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Half mil almost. Okay.
Right. So we'll just say half million for conversation purposes.
Where will that get spent?
So the direction we are looking to go is to partner with our on-call engineering firm, SLR. They are transportation planning experts.
Who's this again?
SLR. So they are the, they are the procured engineering firm for the City of Torrington.
Okay.
They've gone through the federal procurement requirements.
Okay, I got it.
They're the, for lack of better terms, on-call engineering firm. They are the transportation planning experts. It's what they do. And the goal would be for them to come out of this planning exercise with engineering design that we could then take to Connecticut DOT and say, here's what we'd like to do to a capital investment project, like a capital improvement project for this area. That hasn't happened. That doesn't exist with DOT right now, CT DOT. Because the corridor study just said, well, you guys could have better signs, you could probably retime some traffic lights and minimizing it, maybe on purpose. You could, you know, enhance your crosswalks. But really what that does, it doesn't have that lasting restructuring or redesign of an intersection. It's not answering your question. I can see you looking.
No, no, I just, I can't believe that that's a half million dollars worth of study to know what you guys already know. You've got the talent in Torrington to do line of sight adjustments and to apply for whatever funding is needed from the state.
With a strong caveat is that the state DOT, they're not, it's not on their agenda. It's not. And in order for it to get on their agenda, they need some sort of engineering plan. They need some sort of determinative plan for the state DOT to consider it a feasible, workable project.
Keeping in mind, we're talking about three state roads that intersect. You've got Route 8, you have Route 202, you have Route 4. And that's, that's the challenge that we have because you're absolutely right. If this, if these were local roads, we have all of the, you know, skill set to be able to adjust those. But the connectivity grant that was awarded to us, I don't know, six or seven years ago, that helped design the sidewalks that were built on East Main Street, the corridor study that identified the bottlenecks. Those all lead up to this point. And for us to take it to that next step and really start to hone in on that intersection, critical not only because it's three state roads, but to your point, there are some pretty significant commercial spaces that front that property. But there are also some blighted properties that front that property. So from a city's perspective, what are we going to do to develop a more cohesive plan, pulling together the pieces that we've already done? We've done the sidewalks, we've done the corridor study. Now we really want to focus on this intersection. So I, I agree with you. I don't like to take grant money unless I know that there is going to be something fruitful, something productive that happens at the end of it. That is a conversation that William and I have had. He didn't even want to entertain the thought of applying. If I wasn't prepared to say yes, we will take this to the next step.
And fair enough. I'll support this.
Do we have other intersections where I'm bottom of East Main Street? Even intersection in front of BJ's and that Cumberland Farms would be a nice improvement.
Yes.
Seems to be a bottleneck of traffic. Like after this, are these other ones indicated?
So that was a conversation William and I had this morning. You know, obviously getting this intersection on the state's priority list. I did remind him, of course, we want to engage the cog because the intersection that you are speaking of, Torrington West Street and East Main Street, has been on that priority list easily 15 years.
Since my mother was alive.
I know. It is. It's, so, and I said, I don't want this to bump that. Because that to me is just as dangerous an intersection. And you have a, you have a large school with young people there. So I agree with you. This, this should not change the prioritization of these projects. It was something we just talked about this morning.
I'll call the motion.
Call the motion? Everybody feel like you've got your answers? Okay, good. All right. Then I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, William. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed on Corporation Counsel's member of September 16, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated September 16, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated September 16, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Wallach, anything else from Economic Development that you want to share this evening? Okay. All right. Mr. Farley, anything from the Treasurer's Office? Yes. Yes. Yeah. If you could do me a favor, that microphone that seems to be, yeah, leaning up. Yeah, would you pull that in? Because, you know, one of the reporters that's trying to listen remotely is struggling to hear us.
Oh, okay.
That other one. Not that one.
Sloan says forget it. I think Sloan pushed it away. So the Capital Tax Recovery Program is something that the council had approved probably four or five months ago. And that's for out of state license plates to try and get them back on our, our tax coffers. So just for an example, in, let's see, April, May, June, July, and August. In April, there were eight vehicles that were found to be out of compliance. May, there was one. June, there were two. July, there were seven. And then August, and I guess they're starting to ramp up, there were 36. So there's been 54 different out of state license plate registrations that have been captured by the Capital Tax Recovery Company. That's, that's brought in a total of $36,855.78 has been collected in fees and fines from these 54 vehicles. CTR has paid $50 per vehicle. And 40% of the fees that they collect resulting in a total cost to the city of $16,346.12. However, moving forward, in our next tax collection season, the city will retain 100% of those motor vehicle taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Yeah. And this is a complaint that I'm sure all the council members have heard from neighbors and constituents, seeing all of these out of state license plates on these vehicles that are parked in driveways for an entire year or two or three. And the inequity, I'm paying my taxes, why do they own a vehicle with a different license plate? Are they paying theirs? So that was the reason we retained the services of CTR. And I think that you're right. I think we'll see those numbers grow as they start to navigate their way through the neighborhoods.
I'm seeing fewer, fewer out of state plates around though, too.
Yeah, hopefully. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Towsey, anything else from WPCA this evening?
Am I in trouble for being stupid?
You were in stupid. Maybe I was. That was a contract in August of '22. They reached a limit that they were allowed to spend. And as you see in that invoice, I just looked at it, there was a negative amount because they went beyond it and they weren't going to charge that. We're working on a new contract to continue with the RPR work.
Thank you very much for looking into it. Really appreciate that.
I got nothing else.
Thank you. I think the other thing about these projects, when we talk about Brightwood, it's been a few years. When you get your shovel on the ground to do the sewer work with the water lines. For anybody that's been driving up and down Midgen Avenue, it's been four years. I think there's somebody that lives over on Midgen Avenue that probably curses the city every time she has to drive on that road. So it does take some time and contract years will.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Mr. Castro, anything this evening? Thank you. City Clerk's office? 52. And although there aren't a lot of people here in the audience or tuned in, anybody that wants to get their absentee ballot, the process is to reach out to your office? CT takeoff. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. 52 days. Corporation Counsel. Bless you.
I have nothing to report this week, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then I'm going to move into item 16 and entertain a motion to consider the business by, business by mayors and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start to my left. Anything this evening, Mr. Oliver?
Just God bless me.
Yes. Anything, Mr. Cavanaro?
Mayor, if, I've missed two meetings on vacation and was wondering if we had any, maybe you already gave an update and I can talk to you later about it. The status with the Board of Education and their proposal to take over the health insurance over their department themselves.
So you did not miss anything. But the Office of the Corporation Counsel has submitted numerous FOI requests for information that has not been forthcoming up to now.
That has not been forthcoming. The, and the requests specifically were to, what were the requests specifically? I don't have them here in front of me, but essentially what the request was for any and all communication that they had with Brown any and all communication that they had with Brown and Brown, which is the insurance agency that they have now designated their agent of record.
Okay.
So what we're, what we're asking for is basically everything that they dealt with, you know, emails, phone conversations if possible, copies of contracts, copies of requests for proposals. And we kind of asked for, send us, we want copies of every newspaper ad for the request, for proposals that was, you know, that was done. All we've gotten is about 100 pages of emails that are very, very duplicative, back and forth between Brown and Brown and the Board of Ed. A little somewhat informative, but not really helpful. So I'm just, I plan to send an email to the Board of Ed saying, your response really wasn't that responsive. I'm waiting for more documents and we're hoping to see. I mean, our, our feeling is that they didn't comply with the provisions in our charter and ordinances for getting requests for proposals.
Right.
Publication in the newspaper, opening bids in public, all that stuff. It appears that they, they hired Brown and Brown. Brown and Brown directly solicited bids from several insurance companies, but those weren't disclosed to anybody. We've never seen them. So we're looking for a lot of that information, and especially to the extent that we're requesting documentation to show that they complied with the procurement process that everybody's supposed to follow, including the Board of Ed. I'm expecting maybe the response is going to be, well, we don't have those because we didn't do it. But at this point, we don't know.
As city council, worst-case scenario, if they don't manage to do this correctly within the necessary timeline, just who ultimately, is the city ultimately responsible if there are, if individuals who are supposed to be insured are not insured? And who is on the hook if there are medical issues that would, or would in the past have been covered under this insurance? If there is a lapse of insurance, who's, is the city ultimately on the hook? Who?
I was, we're both, we're both, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I think, I think that they're on their way to getting insurance for their members. You know, we've been, we've been contacted by, by our Cigna people.
Okay.
Because in order to make the transition, so they've decided to go with Anthem.
Okay.
Fully insured as opposed to self-insured. So Anthem has reached out to Cigna to get claims history and all kinds of documentation so they can put the plan together. And even today, we received an email from Cigna saying, okay, we have these reports that we have to give to Anthem. Is it okay if we give them to them? Because we have control over those reports. And we ended up agreeing, yeah, go ahead and give them the reports because there was a charge of $300 for that, and our position was, well, the Board of Ed should pay for that. And I communicated that to Superintendent Wilson, and in fact, they came over with a check to pay for that. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that they're on their way.
Okay, all right.
If it doesn't happen by October 1st, I don't know if the mayor has a different view, but I think we'll keep our fingers crossed, see what happens. I almost feel like if they don't get it in place by September, October 1st, maybe they'll come back and say, gee, can you cover us for a month or two months? Or I don't, I don't know. It's kind of new territory. We don't really know.
Given, if October 1st, if somebody has a medical issue, the teacher has a medical problem, who, who pays their fair share?
Board of Education has taken on the responsibility of procuring insurance for their employees.
What?
Yes, yeah.
They have money, there is money for them to do?
Well, yes, because what do we know? We know that they did not pay their last installment of 1.0, almost 1.5 million into the Internal Service Fund for fiscal year '24, and they have not paid $4.5 million into that insurance fund for FY '25. For the past three months, they've been writing the reserve that was built up over the last 21 years. So they are responsible. The MOU that the Board of Finance and the City Council agreed to offer them, you pay these expenses or you're done on September 30th. This is their choice. They are responsible for that. But what do we know also? These are our family members. These are our neighbors. These are important people in the lives of our children. They support the economy of this city. We certainly wouldn't want to see any lapse in insurance for these employees of ours.
They should have the peace of mind.
Exactly.
They do some of the most important work in our city. We all know this. And they should have the peace of mind to know that this situation is being handled appropriately, correctly, and there will be no disruption in their plan. And if there's any way...
We don't know that.
Well...
Here's what, here's another thing I would say, though. So both...
I'm just suggesting that we, City Councilmen, and you, Mayor, whatever it takes, if it's a request, just let the people, let our teachers and our staff know that you're good.
So both the mayor and I watched the Board of Education meeting when they received the proposal from Brown and Brown.
Right.
It was the meeting before they, they agreed to, to accept the bid from Anthem. And a lot of those questions were asked by the Board of Ed members of the representative from Brown and Brown. Well, what if the, what if the insurance cards aren't ready in time? What about, what if somebody's doctor isn't part of the plan? They did provide stats where they, Brown and Brown was representing to the Board of Ed that 98% of all the providers in the Cigna plan are also participating in the Anthem plan. So that means that there's 2% that aren't.
Yeah.
But what they said is, and they said, we promise, though, that we'll take care of that. It'll be, it'll be dealt with. And if you don't have your card, you know, on October 1st, you need to go get a procedure, and there's some glitch with your card, call us, we'll take care of it. You know, you're covered. So that was part of the pitch that Brown and Brown made to the Board of Ed. So they kind of stuck their neck out to make some assurances for people.
Okay. Yeah, I only asked to make sure that, that...
Yes.
We know exactly where it is, that there is continuity of service.
Continuity of service. And from the perspective of what is this costing the taxpayers, that was the other reason for the FOI. Because there's a lot of talk with some numbers that are net of a premium cost share. There's a credit for some premium. So I don't know that there has been real clarity for the taxpayers or the Board of Finance or the City Council as to exactly what is this going to cost. So that's the other reason for that FOI request is we really, you as council members and the Board of Finance, as the fiscal authority for the city, need to know that.
All right. All right. Well, thank you for that, Mayor.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
That was it. Councilwoman Rowett?
There was an ordinance committee today, so we had two agenda items. One that we'd like to have, schedule a public hearing. I know we couldn't get it on the agenda tonight for, for us to have it on October 7th. So I guess we want to have it on the agenda at least for full council support to have a public hearing on October 21st. No. On October 7th.
Do we need to add that to the agenda to... Okay.
Well, that's, that was my hope, that we could do that tonight so that we could actually have the public hearing. But is it too late for that?
No, nope. So you want to make a...
Make a motion.
There you go.
To add an additional agenda item for tonight's meeting to have a public hearing for the revisions proposed for the Code of Ethics.
So I have a motion to add to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So motion made by Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And back to you, Councilwoman, the motion for establishing the public hearing date?
We're looking to establish the public hearing for October 21st.
Right, so you want to move, your motion is to schedule?
October 7th. Well, October 7th. I keep going to the 21st because that will be our next ordinance committee meeting to review the Fair Rent Commission and some of the recommendations that the commission is making, so.
All right, so the motion I heard is to schedule a public hearing for October 7th on the Board of Ethics. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanaro, Councilman Cavanaro. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good. Sneaking that one right under the wire. Anything else?
No, I just, I wasn't here for the last meeting as well, but I did read the minutes, you know, having to do with the turf fields and the joint meeting with the Board of Finance. And just for the record, I will continue to be opposed to any kind of artificial turf. And, you know, there is research on the number of injuries that occur for our students that play in those fields. My nephew did one as a research paper when he graduated from UConn or during his tenure with UConn, and it's pretty significant. And I think there is more data at this point. So just for the record, I want to continue to object as well as having additional money for one of the most expensive building projects, school building, building projects in the state.
History of the world.
So I'm in the history of, just Connecticut, not the world, but it's pretty close. But it's really disappointing that, you know, the taxpayers are looking to, and I know there's an 85% reimbursement, I saw that in the minutes, but I still want to, just for the record, state my objection.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino?
Just a follow-up from our last meeting. We had the residents here from Lover's Lane about the solar panels. And they asked the city if there's anything that we could do as a council. Is there anything that we can do?
So I probably should have put my, my two cents on the table this morning, or this after, this afternoon, earlier this evening, I did provide to the council members a copy of a memo that I received today from the city planner, Jeremy Leifert. I did, after that council meeting, request that he bring this matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to look at it, because the lens that they look at this through is, is it consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Is, you know, are there any land use restrictions or water courses or any inland wetland concerns? So in this memo, he does opine to all of the issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission might have relative to the development. And his opinion is in light of the above and depth of review and reports conducted, that the commission has no objection to the project in general, however, that the commission would recommend two items for inclusion in the approval of the conditions, you know, one being screening so that the solar panels were not so easily visible to the residents of the condominium, and that frequent and regular inspections of the construction site occurred during construction. So from a Planning and Zoning Commission perspective, they are saying this, there's nothing that is inconsistent with zoning for the request. You know, however, if it's the council's desire to go on record with concerns that this will be the fourth solar array in the city of Torrington, I hate to say four because one of them we overwhelmingly embrace, that's the one on the landfill. However, the other three...
The other ones we don't want here.
You know, and so this one is only 14 acres, but between the Veragee project on East Pearl Road and the Silicon Ranch project on Highland Avenue, this will be over 100 acres of property in the city of Torrington that will be consumed by solar arrays. Please, please.
You know, for the council's information, and it's a little bit of hearsay, but they are looking, there's another property that they're looking to propose or apply for with the Connecticut Siting Council, and that's right near West Hill Pond. I call it a pond. It's a lake, it always does a pond, but just behind some property that people I know. So they've been actually doing testing behind there, and they do need to give notification to neighbors of which they indicated they would be sending a memo out next week. So that's another proposal for solar that I feel like, you know, if we don't object and if we don't stand up for all of this land that, you know, would be great to have either as open space or continued as farming.
Or developable.
Or developable, whatever.
With tax revenue?
With some tax revenue, but it's, it's really, it's really a problem. So I do think the council should make a strong position against, or to the Connecticut Siting Council with our objection. Enough, you know?
Yeah. I agree. I look at it, it's like an industrial site near a rural residential suburban area, and it just seems inappropriate.
Yeah.
They're, you know, they are cutting down a large percentage of trees on these properties. Then they plow up the topsoil that gets sold off, never to be recovered. So if you're ever looking at those sites as agricultural lands, it really is a setback because, you know, everything of value has been scraped away. So that, and then we're going to possibly encounter problems down the road. You know, our own people in City Hall are not confident that they're going to last 20 years. And then what happens? You know, EverSource is not embracing this either, you know. They are going along trying to, you know, promote alternative energies, but maybe this isn't the best way to do it. I think we have plenty of flat roofs in town, and it would benefit our own townspeople to help make that possible. And so I would hope to oppose this. I think we had good letters by the condo association, and another resident, Teresa Kinino, wrote a lengthy letter regarding her perspectives on that.
So with that said, then, do you want to add to the agenda? A motion to direct my office to write to the Siting Council and go on record with our concerns that this being the fourth array proposed in the city of Torrington, three of them are already, you know, across the finish line. The other issues that I did reach out to the city engineer, you know, Lover's Lane, or any of us living in the West End knows, it's a winding road, there are some steep inclines, I think some limited sightlines, these are some of the things that city engineer identified. You know, the road is in good condition, the culvert, because there is a waterway. And you getting directions home?
Yeah.
Oh. So I would add that, you know, the concern about this heavy truck traffic on those roads. Anybody that watched all the truck traffic coming off of Highland Avenue and Rossi Road, devastating. Devastating, yeah. All right, so a motion to add it to the agenda made by Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
All right, so the motion...
I think for saturation at this point.
Yeah. So the motion that I'm looking for is a motion to direct the mayor's office to go on record with the Siting Council, advising them of the concerns we have with the number of solar arrays being approved in the city of Torrington, the number of acres that are being consumed by these arrays, and some of the traffic concerns we have. And anything else we can think of?
Well, and any other...
Best lawyer in the room.
All, yes.
Don't make that motion.
No, I'll, yeah.
All right, so a motion made by Councilwoman Spino. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Oliver? Yes.
I would also like our state, our state legislators to be included on this letter as well.
Okay.
They're, they are supposed to be our ombudsmen in Hartford, and we should let them know that the people of Torrington are feeling very much abused. Abused.
Abused, isn't it?
Yeah, we're distressed. We've been identified as a distressed community, and this is just adding to the problem.
So I think that you heard...
I'm not saying put all that in, I'm just...
No, I, no, I, because I'm sensitive to all that, and you heard, you heard our economic development director say, you know, social justice, this is social justice when all of these, these demands for this kind of development fall to an urban center like Torrington.
Yeah, stop targeting distressed communities.
It feels more like injustice than justice. It feels more like injustice than justice, to be honest with you. Especially with the way that people feel about all of this stuff that happens.
Can we also add for any future applications?
Do you want to do that? Oh my goodness.
Hundred percent.
I mean, I would, you know.
I don't know. I think that's predetermination. I think we have to be careful with stuff like that.
Got to put your foot down.
Well, maybe we could create an ordinance that you just can't dig up all the topsoil and sell it off somewhere.
Well, because in, in doing this green technology, they're destroying the environment in order to do it. I mean, it's so hypocritical, it's ridiculous.
Maybe.
Sorry.
We're, we're asking the mayor right now to include a whole lot of things in the.
So whatever you decide to put in there.
There are battles.
Do you want to, yeah, do you want to take your time, compose the letter and then either through a Zoom meeting or wait in two weeks and have council approve it?
Is there a deadline?
There is. So the deadline for this was originally September 15th. The Siting Council gave an extension to October, I think it's 5th.
Was it a Zoom meeting next Monday, maybe?
I could, yes, yes. I can compose the, the letter. And then reach out, we could do a quick one-item Zoom meeting and you can approve the letter before I send it.
Could you do a poll, who's available next Monday night for it to do this?
I'm available.
Okay, we have a poll.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. All right, so the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Oliver.
Yep.
Do, I better call this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Did you have anything else to add?
Just not happy hour.
No, no.
Just not the hour, okay. Councilwoman Ivey, anything this evening?
That covered it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Waldron, anything this evening?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're moving into item 17. I'm going to open the, I need a motion to open the meeting back to the public for agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. If I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron, all, all in favor? Any opposed? Agenda items only, anyone from the public on agenda items? Mr. Buddhist, agenda item, okay? Tax collector. I don't think it was on the agenda.
Is he recommending that we raise?
Oh.
Number 13.
More roads?
Sorry.
Tax collector, I got a problem. I know your taxes got to be paid by July 1st, right? Right?
By August 1st. They're due July 1st, they must be paid by August 1st or the first business day after July 31st.
Paul, I knew that for a fact. So I personally walked to the tax collector's office and asked him, what happened? I didn't get no, no tax bill? I don't get nothing. I, I, before July 1st, June, July 1st, June 1st, July 1st, I said, I didn't get no bill. Usually you send something out. And I, he says, oh, they already sent them out. I says, where'd you send it? You didn't send it to me. I said, I didn't get one. I said, that's why I'm in here, because I didn't want to not be able to register my vehicles, this, this and that. I said, I wanted to make sure my taxes were paid. Well, da-da-da-da-da, the guy looks it up, da-da-da-da-da. Okay. He comes up with over $1,400. I said, okay, no problem. He says, as long as you come back by August, end of August, we'll take care of it. I said, okay. So I was in there before the end of August. I, I give him a, I use my credit card, I'll stay charging for it.
They do.
So anyhow, I paid it, right there and then, over 14 plus, right? I go to my mailbox today, I get a bill for $18. I was upset. I went right, I walked right down to the tax collector and I says, what's going on here? I said, what are you guys doing? I said, I was, I said, you remember me, don't you? He says, yeah, I remember you because we had a, a big discussion. We were getting hot, hot at the mouth. So he says, yeah, I remember you, this and that. I says, look what I just got in the mail. I said, I just opened up my mail this morning, this afternoon, and I get this $18 payment. I got to pay it. If I don't pay it, I'm going to do this and they're going to charge me. And I says, what is going on? I says, I paid you in full before the end of August. I said, what's going on here in this place? So he takes 15, 20 minutes, da-da-da, on his computer, blah, 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 this and that. He comes up and paid in full. I says, well, what happened? He, he couldn't explain it to me. But I still didn't get a bill. And after I paid the 14 plus, two days after that, I got the bill for everything that I, you know, my truck, my trailer, this, this and that, I got that bill. So it was after I had paid it. I was looking for that bill before and I asked him where to, he didn't send it. He said, we all sent, we sent them all out. I said, you didn't send it to me? I says, you got my address here. And I says, I didn't get nothing.
And you are living back in Torrington again? You're here in Torrington? You are here in Torrington again? You're back home?
I'm part-time.
Okay. All right. We could take this offline because I would like to hear more about what happened to you.
What's that?
I said, let's take this offline. I would like to hear more about what happened. Okay? Good. Thank you very much, Mr. Buddhist. Okay. Item 18, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was the woman Rouwett.
She's passed on that buzzer.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.